Call this meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Welcome everybody here this afternoon and welcome guests and citizens and others who are here. I'd like to remind everybody, this is a working session of the city council and so public input in this session is not a part of the agenda, but as always, there's a public petition section at the council meeting at seven o'clock. So having said that, we'll move on to the agenda and I will recognize the city clerk for us to continue our working on boards and commissions.
First of all, forgive me for sitting, but it's easier for me to take notes about what you're saying. I will direct you first with this sheet. So Ms. Miller had actually shown me some other state or city that had done something similar to this. Kim prepared this for you. I think she did a really good job. This is a very busy form, but it does show you each and every committee that we have and when their meetings are. So it's good for you to have and it's all in one place, so I don't know how often you refer to it, but it's just good to have a good quick view of that.
Thank you.
Good job, Kim.
Yeah, thank you. Chris?
So for the Animal Care and Control Board, no date has been set yet for their meeting.
It hasn't, and once that board is officially formed, they will work that out and be able to get something.
Is it likely to be a day or night or during a distance of their preference?
I think it's probably going to be left up to the board to make those decisions once they get arranged enough. But they don't quite have a board yet, so it's going to take a minute. The first thing I'll direct your attention to is this sheet. These are the appointments that you made at the retreat. So I have taken all of them off of this, so this is really the only ones that are left to consider. So this sheet also, it's really just to help you to go along with this one, so if you can refer to both of these at the same time. So the animal care is just another form. You can see that Catherine Coans was appointed for Ward Five. Stacy Graham was appointed for Ward Seven and Michael Hicks, Dr. Hicks actually, was appointed as a veterinarian and the other slots are vacant. So going back to this page.
The ones that the appointments we've already made, have they been notified?
Have not been notified.
They've been moved?
Right. It was just a piecemeal, so it's just easier to kind of wait until and make sure you didn't adjust anything to. So there is one that I had a question about from that prior appointment and we'll get to that in a little bit. It's CCLP, so we'll get to that in just a minute. So the only applicant that we have at this stage is, and these are ward specific, there is an applicant for Ward Four. You have her personal history form here, Tasha Aldridge. You will recognize Tasha Aldridge. Now, I know that she, I don't know whether she's going to be in the city or not in the city. She currently lives in the city, so she said that she's going to move her business from downtown. She is moving it out to West Ridge, which is still in the city, so that is consideration.
Their residence accounts and not where the business is.
That is correct, and I don't recall her saying anything about moving, so as far as I know. So I will pause there and let you all give a little consideration to that particularly, Ms. Watkins, because that's your ward.
What pansy street is that? It's not the lead to me. Are you sure it's Ward Four?
I am not sure that it's Ward Four.
I'm not prepared to make appointments for my ward.
Kim says.
Yes. She said it was Ward Four. Maybe that's part of what got ended to be her place for. This is the only applicant that's called.
So three appointments have been made as reflected on this sheet and then the only personal history form that I have at this time. We talked about a little bit at the retreat that once you all finished this phase of appointments, remember, these are lingering back from the summer, and so once you all have finished this first phase of appointments, it's my plan to prepare a press release to say who has been appointed and which positions remain available and to solicit personal history forms again, if that is what council wants me to do. It may be that you all have some folks in mind for these, so just waiting for your direction on that. So do you want to?
Well, I just want to know, like, before.
Okay. Okay, that takes us to Board of.
And I'll have a board before tomorrow.
Okay. That takes us to Board of Adjustment. There was a question, I think Mr. Bullet, you had indicated that Tom Harris would want to be reappointed. Actually talked to him today, he does not. So that is a true vacancy now. Paul Revis does want to be reappointed. He is in Ward Three. And I don't have any current applicants other than Mr. Revis who would like to be reappointed.
I'm sorry. After that, Tom Harris did not want to be, is that right?
He does not want to be.
And I suppose he'd be his ward, right?
Yeah. He said he would like to be on the board that met more often, the Board of Adjustment doesn't meet just as he.
I think that they, I didn't bring that. Maybe I did. Do you look at that? So they actually do, they meet, but so you may be thinking about the Business Development, the Business Authority, but the Board of Adjustment actually meets on the first Tuesday of each month at 5:30.
But if they don't have an application for something.
Then they don't meet, got you. Okay, all right. I didn't understand that. Mr. Joyner, Carl Revis is in, if you want to. Okay, that brings us to the Business Development Authority. You have a personal history form from Leah Henry. She indicated that she is interested in being on the Redevelopment Commission. However, there are no vacancies on that. Those were done at the retreat.
Well, I understand that there was no Ward Four coming in retreat, and the question that actually looked at so long ago, there is a Ward Four vacancy because someone, first they left it, see what the Ward Four vacancy.
So the easiest way to look at that is.
Yeah.
Oh, she took another.
It was Ashana Robinson, Ward Four, appointed, left her position.
Now, is that, that is actually not a ward specific board?
Is it a government board issue?
It is not, not ward specific. So you don't have it included there in what you're looking at because there were no vacancies, that's why you don't have it, but it was included at the retreat. Here is that sheet.
It's.
It was filled.
The question you had.
So I didn't bring things that had already happened, so let me see if I can answer Luther Ezell, Luther Ezell was the, and then George was the cleric. He was actually moved from the Business Development. That was a board that doesn't meet very much, so. I'm not sure which ward Luther Ezell was, like, not sure which ward it is, but that is not a ward specific.
So it has been, some impression of prayers that we've heard about.
No, no.
By wars.
So, okay, so can we, so going back to Business Development Authority, so Leah Henry had indicated that she wanted to be on the Redevelopment Commission. There's no vacancies at this stage on that commission, so in talking to, I called her today to say, this is the board that you said you wanted to be on. Do you have any interest in anything else? She indicated Business Development. I did tell her that that board meets very rarely. It may be that that changes because of things happening downtown now, I don't know, but she's still indicated that she would like to serve on that board and there is a vacancy. So may I believe you normally make those appointments.
Yeah.
So that may be. All right, so that takes us down to the Central City. I had a question about the Central City. There was an appointment made at the retreat. Charles Robertson was appointed, and I actually got seated to work on that. I'm not sure what slot that he is intended to go in. Garland Jones was not reappointed at that time. He would like to be reappointed. These appointments just weren't made. Jean Almond would like to continue to serve. David Joyner, I never heard from, so I tried to.
Did you tell me the phone number?
I don't have a good phone number. His form was returned. I've not heard from him.
I talked to him.
So I don't know.
What did he say? He wanted to serve, I thought, and then Garland.
Okay, so that means that we have one too many folks. If all of those three are reappointed, then we have one too many. So I don't know what to do.
Now, some of those are designated for certain kinds of.
They are, yes, and so if you, if you look at this form, this will help you to know who is where.
So why don't we just expand it? Is the prime over? How many is on the board now?
So there are three ex officia members.
Ten, and then three.
There are five members at large currently, and then there are specific, like the Central City property owner, so specific designations.
Well, I mean, with the activity of that board right now, I don't think it'll hurt us. Do we have to amend hours or?
The ordinance.
That has to be annoying too. They run it at the next, unless you're going to travel in, if you're really in a hurry.
How are the attendants for this?
They are, the attendance is good. I did not get Garland Jones' form back, but I don't know if they got lost. I just assume things get lost in the mail when people don't respond, but staff recommends his reappointment and he is, he's been attending that. Jean Almond would like to continue to serve and David Joyner, we're here and now, would like to continue to serve, although I haven't had any conversation with him.
But Chris, you go to the meeting, so do they have, you have problems, meeting quorums, gentlemen? It's a high energy business.
Great interest in that particular one.
So I would propose, or I would move that we just expand the Central City revitalization.
Awesome. And it will be in a large position then?
That's my question. Do you want to add an ex officio or do you want to add another member at large?
At large.
Any other questions, discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. opposed?
So do you want to, until you formally, do you want to just wait on all of these or do you want to make any of these reappointments tonight or just wait and do it?
I would like to see us move ahead.
I would.
Okay, so reappoint Garland Jones, Jean Almond, and David Joyner, and then next time you'll make it formal when you change that with Mr. Robertson.
And we do include Dr. Lockwood too, right?
He is, he's already there.
Okay.
In a at-large receipt.
So the next hour will be after the review. Who we, who we call? Charles Robertson.
It'll be next meeting. It'll be.
Oh, at their meeting, not our next review, okay.
At the next meeting in April.
Yeah.
So that takes us to Community Appeals Board. Tasha Aldridge had also indicated that she would like to serve at either of those slots, Animal Control or Community Appeals, so.
Ward Four says.
There's a, there's a Ward Five vacancy, a Ward Three vacancy, and Ward Six, David Durgen would like to be reappointed.
Those are, who's just stepped out?
She did. She was, she actually lived in Ward One and represented Ward Three, but she just said she would give a Ward Three person.
So what did you just say, you're going to get her? Yeah.
Mr. Bullet, would you want to reappoint David Durgen? That takes us to Historic Preservation.
Ward Five is.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a nomination tonight.
So what is the council's pleasure? Would you like to see a press release prepared to solicit more personal history forms or do you want to just wait on that and make some?
Well, if you did that press release, it would, you would name specifically boards and commissions that you had openings for, right?
I would, yes. I would actually name the ones that have been appointed and also list the ones that have vacancies to solicit that. The newspaper's been really good about helping us to do that, so would that be your pleasure to do it that way or do you want to wait first and maybe you have some folks in mind?
I was just thinking. We just still make it.
Okay, so that takes us to Historic Preservation Commission. When you look at these side by side, I do think it's helpful to see them. You can see there is one vacancy. And there is one applicant, Alec Horganis. And this is, I did list what ward, but this is not ward specific.
important, what sort of presidential board?
Yes, yes.
I guess the question is, down here in the notes says he's living in both Rocky Mountain and Tennessee. So is he living in Rocky Mountain more than he is in Tennessee or vice versa?
Where is he? I was going to vote, you can't vote both places.
I did, I did question that and he told me that he lives about equally both places, apparently over a building in the downtown. I don't know.
So Howard Street looks like.
I don't know about that.
I prefer to have somebody who's off, like, you know, he could always attend meetings at most to attend, but I would prefer to have someone who's already here, knows our community and the challenges that we face.
And maybe.
I will say this, I talked to him quite some time ago, so I don't know what his current situation is, but may still be the same. Do you want me to check with him to see what his current situation is or whether he's still living both places?
Well, I think the fact that he lives above a building down there, that's the kind of thing we've been promoting, his residences above businesses, right? So man is being surplus for him, but I agree with Rupert, if he's sort of half and half here than having somebody more, and if he's not, if he's still in the half and half situation, maybe we should just say, please let us know when you're fully, fully established your residence here.
So I hear some follow-up, so I will follow up. That takes us to the General Audit Committee.
Okay, we'll keep turning the page.
Let's get that one out. All right. Next page then is MLP Commission. So there, I don't have any applicants for that, so I think we just move along with that one unless you all have something.
Yeah, we have people to keep that energy there.
The Mayor's Commission.
Okay, but I need to talk about Martin. Can we stand up?
You do, yes, you have a good number of folks still on there, but I will add that in the press release. The Mayor's Commission has, so I will say this about the Mayor's Commission, all those appointments have been made, but there are, that commission may have up to 15 members and currently has 11. So there's one applicant for that. I don't know what the council's pleasure is, whether to add a member. It's already there that you can if you want to, it's just that currently they have 11 serving. The ordinance says there can be 15.
So do we approve that or is that the Mayor's, the Mayor's Commission's? Just call the Mayor's Commission?
No, the council wants as well, if you all do.
So is that Ward?
It's not Ward, it's not ward specific.
Okay. He's graduated, retired volunteer.
I will say that he learned about it from Citizens Academy. He did.
So you want to?
Planning Board, the Ward Three citizen who's serving in that would like to continue to serve.
Sure.
Johnny Mayer. And then that takes us over to the Tree Advisory Board. I think there are actually perhaps three vacancies on there, but I need to follow up with that. I heard that someone might be moving and someone might have some health issues. Linda Dittner, I'm told, for Ward One, excuse me, Ward Two, may be moving, and Ann Podesta, I believe, has some health issues, so I need to follow up on that and see where that is, but for sure Linda did reside, so that is.
She's been a good member.
That is Ward Five, that is, I think she had a little mixed feeling about that, but she does. Utility Service Review Board, Marletha Mohammed would like to continue to serve. She is Ward Four. And then there is a vacancy for Ward Six, but I don't have any applicants. And then that takes us to the Workforce Housing Advisory Commission. There's a few questions I have about that. You all adopted, you made some amendments at the retreat to that commission, but I don't know, I don't know what length that term is intended to be, if you have given that any thought. So in this little packet is that.
A lot of times a three-year term, so I would suggest they did. We'll be dealing with that issue at least that long.
Except for three, oh, three years?
Yeah.
And then the five members that are on the next page, there'll be five members, so one from the Housing Authority, one from the faith-based community, housing developer. You all will just make those appointments. It's not these folks, you all will make those, as I understand it. I just wanted to make sure that's what you all envision, that not, the Housing Authority is not appointing somebody, or you all will make those appointments.
So are we talking about, when you say faith-based community, are we talking about specific churches that you might have to do, or a longer, a faith person, a faithful, are we talking about organization and then use?
That's. I thought it was the church that had involvement in providing housing.
So that is something you, you, council, council to clarify what that intent is. I don't know what that intent is.
I hope it will be like a miracle.
Do you?
So you're going to, what, the police council, the mayor? I'm hoping that it would be inclusive for all faiths.
That's right. Just some clarification about what that does mean.
So we're ready for appointments.
Do you have someone?
Yeah, I know mine.
Okay.
I do, I know, I'd like to appoint Susan Perry Cole.
And I will ask her for personal history.
I want to point that to anybody who did not get this person's history call.
Awesome.
I would like to recommend that Leah Henry, Leah Henry, I don't know if she's interested in this particular, but she was very interested in the commission. And that experience will also go well here, if she's interested.
She, she was not.
You talked to her already about this?
I did, when I talked to her this afternoon or this morning, to ask her because putting the, she, she said she, but maybe after you have a conversation with her, I didn't.
Let me show you. She has this.
We got one question. Lewis Bridgers, I have to call and check on his license.
Is that L.E.W.I.S.? And so the personal history form, is that R.I.D.G.E.R.S. So the personal history form is on the website, but if you will give me contact information for him, I'll be glad to contact and he will get that personal history form.
So no appointments have been made to this so far, right?
Not so far, just the worst two today.
No, each council member gets a candidate, and then we approve five members from the Housing Authority, based, faith-based community and housing development business community. So we each get one person and then we have those five others.
And so two were made this evening, so Susan Perry Cole for Ward Two, Max Adeb by the mayor, and Lewis Bridgers you want to contact. So are you actually making that today? Are you?
Yeah.
You say yes, Bridger?
Yes.
And Leah Henry you want to contact?
You want to go through and clear?
For Ward One Gloria Davis.
I would encourage everybody else to go ahead and see about pulling somebody, so just get up and get running.
I would first, everybody else to go ahead and see about pulling somebody, so this can get up, get running, um, out of the wood, or whether or not the other five members being recommended by the housing authority, faith-based community, housing developer, business community. Is that something we need to work on or somewhere else working on that?
No, that's. And I will, I, I don't think I said, um, at the retreat, Catherine Coes was appointed for the animal care contingent upon receipt of a personal history form, which you have, everyone has.
I recommend that we just go ahead and ask Kelvin Blackwell as the CEO of housing authority.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that Kelvin?
K L K E L V I N, Blackwell, M A C K L.
Okay, I'll call council.
So, so that is, um.
That would be the housing authority?
Right, so that's whoever is the CEO of the housing authority, is that a?
Yes, yes.
So if he left that job, we get somebody, I'm not suggesting he is, I'm just.
Well, I don't think the ordinance specifically says that, doesn't specifically say that. It just says a member from the housing authority, so.
The housing authority could rather be, I mean, if he that.
You could, you could change that up, so it doesn't have to be that particular.
So the faith-based community's got two members, I mean, a housing developer and a business community person.
So you will start to see these on your regular agenda to, to show up?
I guess my question was that, do you have anybody from the business community, uh, housing developer? We're gonna have to suggest a few people there. You know, faith-based, uh, Thomas Parker, he ran out for, uh, Dr. Thomas Parker, for faith-based.
Why don't we talk to four days to see if he's interested in that?
Somebody's, somebody's already serving already.
Oh, he's feeling invisible.
Oh, the community is physical.
All right, we'll work on that, see if we can go, go ahead and get them done.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Just two more at the very back, um, and council member Blackwell, perhaps you, I have not actually talked to him, but I believe he works with you Dale Terry. Um, his term actually expired in December on the library floor, but he's served on there for a long time and seems to have a passion for that. Do you have a feeling on that?
I, I, I don't, but if, if he's, if his attendance has been good, I don't have any objection.
Um, I can follow up on that.
I mean, does anyone else? But he's, he works hard.
I'll follow up on that seriously, and, um, council member Miller, um, I believe that your term on the staff board actually expired in December, but you're still serving on that currently.
Yeah. If somebody wants to go at it, you can, but I have the access.
So would you be willing to continue to do that, that council's pleasure?
Yes.
That's it for me.
Okay, Pam, I know from conversations we've had and others have had, we, we had a little bit of an administrative oversight with the nomination of Mr. Dancy as the NAACP representative on the HRC last year. And that nomination never got to the council for approval or consideration.
It did not, and I can speak to that, so I went back to research that because whenever I see I did something wrong, or anyone else did, I go back to see how long we've been doing it wrong, how it happened, that kind of thing. So this is the only board commission that has appointments from other agencies. And historically, we've got it wrong more than we've gotten it right. And going back through the years, way back, um, in the early, you know, two thousands. And so what has happened, those appointments have not necessarily happened at the same time that council makes their appointments. So these have, these folks have been calling to say, this is my appointment, and it's just, it's just been put there. And that is how this happened, but it's also how the others happened too, so it was not specifically this one. There are three appointments to that.
But they should be approved.
They should be.
And also be residents?
Yes, so residency.
Is that part of the charter?
It, it is, so it does say that they're city residents, so that one truly was an oversight, um, and I don't know. So that current term expires twenty twenty-one, I don't know what council, if you want to go back and, I don't know what you want to do, I will leave that to you. But I will take, I will, I'm a big girl, I'll take part of that blame of doing that.
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna chime in, I don't think it was Pam's fault or anyone's fault, because in the meeting when we were talking about boards and commissions, uh, Mr. Dancy named Dick, and we said he was the personal history form. And I think he, he mailed or went by to pick it up. But when you have organizations that have appointments, sometimes you don't get, uh, the ordinance with it. And so if you say the chamber has an appointment, if they're a member of the chamber, or the NAACP, or the faith-based community, or whatever, if they are a member, bona fide member, then that's what you, you know.
But are you saying that they are accepted, accepted from the residents?
What I'm saying is, they said the, what is your, uh, hall of fame has an appointment on the board. I'm just using.
Oh, on our board?
Yes, so you can understand. And if it's a member of the hall of fame, and you were to submit that name, it didn't send any other residency requirement with the appointment, and so that's how.
That's how it happens.
That's how we missed that. But the question I was gonna ask Jeff, it's really not a big problem, you know, so we could either just reappoint someone from the NAACP, but it needs to go before the board, because he, Mr. Dancy was, um, uh, recommended by our board. If we're gonna follow protocol. And then the second thing is, either, you know, it be amended, or have we ever amended any of our ordinance in reference to boards and commissions before?
With respect to residency?
Or anything.
Yeah, I think we have, well, we have, it's been, we've had them a long time, I'm sure that they've been amended since, since past. To expand the board?
But he means as to residents. He means as to residents.
Well, as to, okay.
Well, residency and. Because I think when I made that comment, people were like, oh, now they're gonna change the rules, but not trying to change the rules, I just wanted.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, you certainly could change it as to residency, I don't know, I don't remember that it has been changed, uh, in respect to now, what you mentioned, but you do, the council, or my head, my party.
Well, I talked to Mr. Dancy, he doesn't have a problem, um, if he's gonna create a problem, uh, he was just a desert bee from the NAACP. And, uh, it was fulfilling, uh, what we had asked him to do, so it was just really, uh, and I don't think any other council member sees it as a problem, I just think others in the community may see it as a problem, so it's really not a problem.
Some community members about that.
Right.
Well, the other thing, I just would like to remind us all, the human relations commission, let's go back to why it was created, you know? It was created because of the stresses that all communities in America were dealing with as relates to race relations and to civil rights and the immigration. And so from the very beginning, it was a place where perspectives were supposed to be able to be represented, that either were impacted by, or helped create or feed to the tensions that existed. So perhaps one of the things that we need to help the people who sit on that committee recognize, is that, um, in the conversations and dialogues that take place, you know, especially when we see what's happening in city council meetings every single month. To not be able to deal with those issues in that space makes me question, do we have an effective human relations commission? Are you really doing the work? You know, when we have every two weeks, people here who are clearly, are concerned about the environment that we're in. One perspective or another. Yeah, yeah, it's still a racial issue, we still have racial issues, so whether Mr. Dancy's there or not, you know, is to me not really germane. If we say that somebody has to live within the city limits, which we say for other commissions, then, you know, I'm okay personally and as a member, you know, of the NAACP. But what I would say, if all of our focus is on making sure we have nice conversations, but we're not changing the fabric, the core of our community, and embrace these difficult issues that, um, still have root cause issues, then are we not doing our job? And that's the challenge I bring back to the table, I mean, we do great work, and I'm not, that's not a criticism at all of what anybody's doing, I'm just saying, let's take a look at the lens of the work of equity and diversity of the city. And that human relations table is supposed to be a place where, um, everybody can come with whatever perspective they have. So we have the daughters of the Confederacy there with the NAACP, that's supposed to be a protective space, because we're supposed to have, people have perspective from wherever they sit and stay. And the human relations commission was supposed to help the city deal with all these perspectives and have a place for all of us to be able to live here in the city.
And they did a good job of the community conversations and that whole process, so.
Got a lot of praise.
So we, and if I understand everything, then we'd be looking for another nomination. Is that, is that okay with everybody? Is that where everybody is?
If we're going by what our charter is, then yes, but, um, I also just wanted to say, in reference to what Ruben said, with our human relations, um, sometimes it's very difficult for them to deal with issues in our community. Because some of the things that are happening in our community, uh, there should be some dialogue around it, and, um, I think that's one thing that we may need to speak with.
I, I would suggest it's important that we have a joint meeting, right, council and human relations commission, and, and again, if there are issues we want pursued, and what the questions we've got, then, then we'll have them all present. So I would like to see us do that at some, some time, not too far off in the future.
So if, so the NAACP will not be represented, uh, I would ask if he would continue to serve until I bring that back out next week.
Sure, I think that would be great, I'm just, I would say we need to do that.
Without objection.
That he can continue to serve until you have that meeting?
Right, yes.
And I'll get with the manager about the joint.
Is that what we can schedule already, or is it?
It's every, every.
And just to add to the discussion about the ordinance and its creation, says that the human relations commission for the city was, was, is to promote understanding, respect, and harmony among all people. That's the opening sentence.
Didn't say we don't have hard conversations.
I think it said work, I think it said work hard.
It, it is.
This is a heavy lift.
Right, it is a heavy lift. So you gotta be honest and truthful, because you don't get harmony. Harmony doesn't mean everybody shut up and not to hit people, right? Harmony means you change the environment and we're all engaged and moving forward.
And, and one I think, Jeff, do we have, uh, the boards and commissioners, uh, are allowed to go and close sessions? Well, how do, how does?
Uh, it would be on you, you would have to, you would have to be a legal, now, a designated legal device, but they're subject to the other meeting clause, but I mean, they don't, they don't have personnel, and it would have to be, it's not likely that they're going to have an attorney-client matter, the, the legal matter that they're gonna need.
Well.
But they, I mean, i- if occasion arose, they could go into it, but it's.
But you would be there, or an attorney would be there?
Well, I think an attorney would, would have to be there, or at least on the phone or something, but.
I would like to.
It's hard to imagine that, well, they, they could perhaps, you know, the device, but by and large, that stuff they handle wouldn't be closed session.
I would recommend in our, uh, citizen academy, when we deal with board and commission, that we have a component in there dealing with, uh, robberies of order and, uh, also.
Open meetings.
Open meetings, and you just can't go into a closed meeting when you're trying to silence someone, or.
Are they doing that? Are they doing that?
What happened, and I never heard of a relation going to a closed meeting, unless it was personnel, they're not gonna go. So if we're gonna clean it up, let's clean it all the way up.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I think that's one of the things that Mr. Dancy was slighted for, bringing that to their attention. So I think that's very important, that our boards follow.
Rules of order.
Mr. Mayor? Um, I mean, I, I would like to see us really go ahead and, and there's two boards, the animal care and control, finish that up, we've been trying to do this for over a year or longer. And so if you don't know somebody, call your local veterinarian, call somebody in your neighborhood that you know that they're pet friendly, um, you know, this is something that, we've gotten, um, comments from time to time, and this is a good way for us to have an involvement in it. So I, I would encourage you to, let's bring back these committees, every committee of the whole, until we finish getting them done. And the other one is the workforce housing commission, let's go ahead and see if we can finish that up, and if you've got some names of developers or a business person you think that would like to serve on this board, uh, let's go ahead and get that done.
Well, and within the spirit of that, and I know several of us have, have one or two appointments.
Yeah.
So we really, really need to get them all.
Right, right.
Post haste.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on boards and commissions? All right, thank you, Pam. Heavy lifting there too, corral of these wild cats together.
And the audit committee was not done, because the auditor is still reporting to me directly, so I just want everybody to hear whatever that, and, uh, once we get a little bit further down, if anything, we'll make those appointments.
So it wasn't to the council member, or just the mayor?
No, no, he was out in Chapel Hill, that was a decision that was made there.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item, which is an update on the event center. Natasha, I'm only gonna reckon out, is you first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, um, there has been a lot of activity at the event center, um, and so at the request of Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, um, and for the benefit of the council, um, I'll ask Dave Bridget, um, COO of SM, to address you this evening and provide an update on all the wonderful things that's happening at the event center.
That's a question before we begin, so, um, will his presentation, or does the city include as a financial update on how the event center is doing, would that be part of his presentation? Great, that's fine.
Good evening, thank you Natasha, my name's Dave Bridget, I'm the sports facilities management, I'm our chief operating officer. And Natasha asked me to just give a verbal update today on, uh, state of the, of the event center, may I introduce our new general manager, Mark Thomason, who's here with us today as well. So, um, we made a lot of progress over the last several months, and, um, still work to do, and, um, I, from a financial standpoint, um, I'm, I'm pleased to report that through five months, at the end of March, we're actually five thousand dollars ahead of budget in debt income.
Now, that's four to five months, not.
That's the five months.
Five months.
Right. So in our budget, we were, we were scheduled to subsidize, uh, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we're actually, um, in, in red, about three hundred and fifty, so we're about five thousand dollars ahead, so, which is good. Um, and we are booked for the remainder of this year. We'll still be booking a number of, um, other events, but let me give you guys an update on, uh, the type of events and the number of events that we have booked. So we have, for the, for the calendar year of two thousand and nineteen, we have sixty-six banquet events booked, and those banquet events, um, are a combination of the Edgeco room and the Nash rooms upstairs. Total number of days in, in banquet bookings is ninety-seven days, so ninety-seven days of banquet events. In sports entertainment, which is volleyball, gymnastics, uh, basketball, cheerleading, we have thirty-two events booked. have 32 events booked, so 73 days.
Can you, after the fact, email us this report?
Oh, sure. I sure certainly can.
And Dave, excuse me, Dave, while you're talking about sporting in particular, so is that particular activity on track in terms of forecast?
Yes. 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 I think we, yes, we are well ahead of, we are well ahead of our booking projection in the form.
No, who's you? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And then you, that includes youth sports, I think.
That includes youth sports and adult sports, yes. We have other events, 37 other events booked, so 90 days of other events. So some of the events are a combination of, you know, in the fieldhouse events and they're part of banquets. So the total number of events singularly outside of the banquet is 60 days of events. So, last week, we contracted with Chef Brown, Jerome Brown, so we're under contract with Jerome. He started last week, so we have a 12-month agreement with Chef Brown. And I'm gonna let Art come back and introduce himself and talk a little bit further about some of the other activities that we have going on in the Event Center.
Before that, could you, what is your position at SFM?
I'm our Chief Operating Officer.
So some of the events, like the sporting event, youth basketball, and I know some of others, I was there a couple weeks ago, there was a Boys and Girls Club, had their Youth of the Year for the state fair, and there was a youth basketball event there. I think there were 80 teams. Is that pretty typical?
It is. Next week, we have, I think, 56 teams next weekend, not this coming weekend, but the following weekend. I was actually here, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, we had 119 basketball teams, 119 teams. Typically, it's somewhere between 30 and 100. Depends on the size of the event.
I have a question, because I hear this a lot from the community, about the sports events, in reference to the, well, not in reference to, opposed to the concerts, you know, it takes a lot to remove the floor and convert it over. And that we should be doing both? And, or could you speak to that? If somebody wanted to do a concert, they would spend quite a bit to have the floor removed in order to get the stage up and so forth.
It is, it is an undertaking, it'd take half, take the floor up for the concert hall. We want to do both. So we have, I mean, we want to do both. I mean, primary, economic impact is primarily driven through the sporting events, that's when people come in, travel in, so economic impact is, of course, one of the primary, you know, attentions in the performer. But we want to do both. And Art, and I'm sure Art can tell you, as he introduces himself, he comes from the arena background, he's very common, and very educated and experienced in booking events and concerts. So, we want to do both. So, it is an undertaking, councilman, that it's, I mean, we need to do it. I think, I think we counted, we have, I think we have six, six, six events we're bringing the floor up for the balance of the year.
And as I remember from your last presentation, as SFM's last presentation to us, the sporting events and the other events were sort of different seasons of the year, right?
Well, there is a basketball, there's a basketball and volleyball season, which is where we're at, where we are now. So basketball and volleyball start in March, runs through kind of the end of the school, back half of the school year, end of the school year. So that's that ready to wrap up. Then we'll get into some, there's some cheerleading events over the summer, and some dance events over the summer. So there's a five-day convention over the summer through the fall.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Art Thomason, and it's my pleasure to greet you guys this evening. And I wanna just tell you a little bit about myself. Originally from Roanoke, Virginia, I've been in Columbus, Georgia, the last 30 years. I have a extensive background in sports and entertainment. I, former military, so Fort Benning was my last duty station, and I loved the area so much, I ended up staying there much longer than I anticipated. I have a background in radio and television. I worked at a local radio station in Columbus, Georgia, for 17 years as an announcer, music director, and eventually program director over a seven-station cluster. And after I left radio, I went into the venue management field. I started off as an event coordinator, and more recently, the event services manager, with a stint as the interim operations manager. So with the experience that I bring to the Event Center, I'm, I'm well-versed on the operations side, the putting the floor down, the taking the floor up, the conversion factor, booking the entertainment that comes into the facility. The sports background, I'm proud to say I won two state championships as an assistant coach in football and girls' basketball in the state of Georgia. And I am a little bit braggadocious about that point, so if you get an opportunity to come down to the office, you'll see that, that hardware is displayed by that. So I, I want to assure you that you have a beautiful, beautiful facility. The, the building that I come from is a 10,000-seater. You can accommodate 4,000 for a concert, and I know that may bring some concern, but let me tell you, in the 10,000-seater that I was at, over the 15 years that I was at that building, we, we may have had 20 complete sellouts. And the most, the, the greater number would be the entertainment that did 4,000 to 2,000. So you have a facility that can accommodate a lot more than, than you think. But as Dave explained to you, that we're booked. The, the, one of the enticing things about coming to Rocky Mount to run the Event Center is that it's booked. And whether it's a concert or sporting entertainment, I guarantee you, a lot of facilities would love to have the problem that you have. We're booked. So rest assured, your, your building is being utilized today, for, or occurring. State Representative was in the building, I met the new police chief in the building today, part of the Minister's Wives event that's taking place until later on this evening. So the, the facility can accommodate a lot more than when, than what some may think. And I'm looking forward to, to putting those events in the building. If you don't have any questions of me.
Of course, you can get out there. That's kind of exciting for us. Children's, is that me and well, my grandchildren are just in town, and it's the second time they've been, and I mean, I can't wait to come back to town, to go back down there and do the climbing walls and all that. So, are we getting that traffic during the week to go into, to that kids zone?
Yes, sir. I'm glad you asked that question. One of the first things that I, I put in place when I got to town last week, and we started the one-on-ones with the, the department heads, or the, the managers at the Event Center, is we want to be able to tell our story. You guys have invested in this facility, and I want to be able to come and deliver those numbers to you periodically. For example, the Family Entertainment Center alone did over 500 people just from Friday to Sunday. So it, it's being used. It's being used. And, and the task, one of the first tasks that I put on the managers is start taking pictures, start getting testimonials. I want to be able to come to you and bring you some of the good, because I know you get the bad, so I want to be able to tell you some of the good and, and do it for all of you.
Other questions? Ms. White?
Well, in terms of marketing, you say you have a whole, a complete schedule, what can you, what can you do to improve getting it out so that people know about it more? I know you have a sign, like, where you kind of post, you've got a center marquee?
The marquee, yes, ma'am.
The marquee, yeah. But it really doesn't give a listening or showing of what's coming.
That's a good question. And I, I will answer it like this. When I, when I first came to town to, to meet with the deputy city manager, I was just sitting in the office, and I asked just some of the people that were passing through the office, had they been to the Event Center? Well, of course, the answer was no. A lot of people have not been to the Event Center. So I would encourage locals to come, experience the Event Center, just walk around and see the, the investment that you guys have made as a community. But to answer your question directly, a lot of the marketing that takes place for the Event Center happens outside of the market. So at the trade shows, to entice folks to come to the area, to participate, in area tournaments, be it football, basketball, or volleyball, or, or dance competitions. And one of the first people that I met when, when I came to the city was the marketing department for the city, and I want to do a better job of having our marketing director and the city's marketing person work together to see what we can do to bring some more information to the community.
Okay, because we have an excellent marketing team for the city, and so I would just like to see more regionally, you know, advertising and promoting of it, more regionally and locally.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Knight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Knight and Mr. Bullock.
Sound system, have you been able to take a look at that? I'm hearing there might be problems with the sound system.
It's a good question. Most, I want to make sure that, that everyone understands, when someone books a concert, that promoter is directly responsible for every aspect of that concert. The facility basically rents four walls, a ceiling, and the event staff. The promoter is directly responsible for the sound and the quality and/or the lack of quality for that particular event. So the ownership belongs to the promoter, not the facility, for a concert.
Glad we clarified that. But there was a lot of feedback we was getting from the community that our sound system would continue to fail during events. So what I'm hearing you saying, if anybody that's going to do something outside the sports arena, that they are responsible.
Absolutely. One of the things that, that I want to do is, is start educating the community on what it takes to put on an event at the Event Center, and make sure that they understand what we're responsible for and what the promoter of an event is responsible for.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
I just want to make a couple comments. If you can convince somebody which way it could be, me, I've had people tell me, what's going on this weekend? I don't see anything in the news paper, I don't see a billboard. Can we get us to sign up something out there on the busiest corner that says, "Tonight"? What's the places, what's going on?
That's a good question. The, we have two marquees that are about to go up. And once the marquees go up, I think that will address the, the issue that, or the concern that you have.
Let me just make a picky about that. You can go on and sign up for their, their newsletter that goes out, that tells you constantly what's, what's coming up, what events are coming up. So you can sign up for that, so you might want to get all the council members to correct, sign up for that, so you can be on there, and you automatically get that sent to you.
Yes, sir. We're active on all social media and direct mail, so we'll make sure that we get all the councils signed up, so you will get those notifications as the event calendar goes up.
Third thing, very quickly, I'll leave a deck, and a couple more here. Please, in America, North Carolina, see your hockey flag outside, see what you do for some of that.
Okay, well, I mean, I am from Virginia, and we are playing in the national championship, but being that I'm in North Carolina, I'll see what I can do to help.
Okay, Reverend Jordan?
Yeah, since we are really focusing on a lot of food around here, Isaiah, and hoping we have a food show.
The, the food shows are, for example, US Foods. I did a lot of work with them at my prior building. The food shows are, the sites are chosen by the food companies. So that's something that we can definitely go after. I just need to make sure, because you need a huge kitchen to accommodate those food shows, I just need to make sure that we can accommodate it. One of the, one of the things that, that I am going to do my best to do is to become the gatekeeper for the building. I wish I could take credit for all of the hard work that's going to take place at the building, but I, I'm just a coach. I'm going to make sure that I'm the, the, the gatekeeper to make sure that events that we can accommodate, we accommodate, and the ones that we can't, we pass on. Because it, it's, it does us no good to book an event and not be able to accommodate good needs. So that'll be my dish. Yes, sir.
Let's see, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller.
I have a question.
Okay, so.
I just had a question about just another type of event. I hear more people asking about wrestling than anything else. Really, I'm good at wrestling. I don't, I didn't say I did, but I had a lot of questions from the general public.
Yes, sir. I have a great relationship with WWE, and we're actually talking to them right now to make sure we can accommodate their, the center ring and bring some wrestling to Rocky Mount.
Mayor, did you have a question?
No, I guess my, my question is to qualify any events that happen there. You know, I, I got a text, and I don't know a lot about all of these events that we have, but, you know, I, I got, somebody sent me something about an event that was, was going on there called Run It Sexy. And so I just didn't know what an event like that was, what, what we were doing.
Mayor, I'm gonna steal one of your councilman's phrases right there, "Don't blame me." I just found out about it, and I am, I am investigating it as we speak.
Ms. Miller?
Back to the comment that you made with regard to the responsibilities of the promoter versus SFM. The general public is not ever going to understand that, and so it winds up being the city, the Event Center, the city, that comes out, that's who people are talking negative about, you know, with the Garden Baffler, which, and what did the event that was selling up them stuff and do. You know, nobody will ever understand that it wasn't the city's fault or SFM's, it was the promoter. Is there not a checklist that you use and that you require a promoter to go through to know that they're doing what they should have done?
I don't know if they've done it in the past, but I can assure you that one of the tasks that is at hand is to meet with the deputy city manager, and just to make sure that we got all of the people in place that are necessary to put on an event and to educate the promoters. And it'll be my job to educate you guys, so you can educate your constituents. When you get a complaint like that, pick up the phone and call me, and I'll, I'll do my best to explain the situation, so you can explain it to whomever may call.
Other questions?
Mr. Knight? I got a white constituent that's in this room, we got about 10 questions. Can you please talk to this guy? Raise your hand, y'all.
How you doing, sir? Absolutely, I'm excited for him.
All right, thank you. Ms. White?
Do we have his cell number, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to get it?
After being in.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make sure you guys.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. I have a Rocky Mountain, he called me.
Was that, that was a power issue, wasn't it?
Yes, sir, it was a power issue. And it, it was a situation where the sound person for the concert took it upon himself to hook his own power up, and he hooked into the wrong button. His fault.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Dave, Walt, Art?
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I've.
At this time of looking at the agenda, we need to go into a closed session for an attorney-client privilege matter and an economic development matter. We'll hear a motion. Second, hold a favor, say aye.